Give me a moment. My name is Margot Mosklofska and I am a Rules Supporting Year and Policy Analyst of the Agency and am going to be the hearing officer today. Today is Tuesday, January 7th, 2025, and the time is 11:12. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment on the Division 602 rules proposed for adoption by the Oregon Department of Water Resources regarding place-based water planning. These proposed rules were governed how the WRD implements the place-based water planning fund, including how the place-based water planning grant will be administered in the process of statewide recognition of place-based water plans. In addition to the opportunity to present oral comment at this hearing, anyone may submit written comments until 5:00 PM on January 15th, 2025, which is a close of the public comment period. Comments received after that time will not be reviewed or considered by the agency unless the agency decides to extend the public comment period for everyone. No responses to questions will be made at this time. At the end of the public comment period, a report of the comments received and responses will be made available to the public on our website. I've dropped a link to the Division 602 Will Making landing page in the chat and we'll begin taking public comment starting now. Stephanie, if you are ready, I am giving you the floor.
Good morning. This is a quick turnaround. My comments are going to be short. We will be submitting written comments. Again, my name is Stephanie Tidwell. I am the Engagement Director for Water Climate Trust and also the representative for the new Oregon Water Justice Alliance. This is a new organization. We started almost exactly a year ago, and so I'm a little new to some of the details of water policy. So again, you know, personally, I'm just really getting digging into this, learning a lot. And there's just so much going on in Oregon water policy right now, as y'all know. And so I've been focused elsewhere and I'm really just starting to turn my attention to this at the suggestion of some of my colleagues at Water Watch. And I have concerns. I'm hoping that some of these concerns will be rectified as I get deeper into the comments, but just to kind of highlight our initial concerns on this is, one, we don't see how this is going to be truly inclusive of disadvantaged communities that have been already most harmed by unjust water allocation. I say this because of the history of these types of things, because I have most experience of working in the upper Klamath. And what I have seen is time and again, I'm just going to use the blunt word, the water hogs make impacted communities, particularly Native American communities, feel unsafe in that space. And so when I look at these place-based water planning communities, I, just from my personal experience, am skeptical about how much of the voices of these, you know, impacted communities, low-income communities, Native American communities are actually going to have influence in that sphere when the agricultural industry has already dominated it for so long. So I encourage you, as you move along, to do everything within your power to ensure that there are equitable places at the table for these plans. Also, one of my concerns with place-based planning is that Oregon's waters are held in trust for all of its residents. And so kicking the responsibility and the power for making decisions about these public trust waters to some of the communities that have, quite frankly, abused them to the point of collapse cuts other Oregonians, recreationists, rafters, fisher, people, even people who come from all over the world to our rivers, kind of out of the process for deciding how they get managed. And so I have that concern. And then, you know, whenever we see, as an organization that also works in Northern California, whenever we see terms like voluntary agreements, we get real nervous because voluntary agreements are all good when things are going well, but when things start not going well, they fall apart and things rapidly worsen. So those are our primary concerns. I know that you have a law that you're bound to implement. And so, you know, I say these in terms of hoping that we can continue to improve this process for, you know, both our aquatic ecosystems and our endangered fishes and the lower income and disadvantaged communities that depend upon them. And just to close, you know, I'll say that I do see this as a way of hopefully more proactively engaging communities because, you know, as we all know and as we can see from the low attendance here, that outside of the commercial water user entities and the very, very few of us environmental justice water walks, the public has historically been very disengaged in water use and management planning. And so we understand that part of this effort is to more directly engage them in this so that, you know, this stuff doesn't happen in a void that they don't understand. And so we support the intent of it. And I am, I wouldn't say looking forward to digging in on the details, but interested to learn more about it. So you'll be hearing a lot more, hopefully substance, from me before January 15th in written comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. We're not seeing any other names online right now. Harmony, would you like to take this opportunity to comment?
Sure. I think this is so fascinating. My name is, how do I, so do I, I'll talk to the owl.
The owl will scan the room.
Okay.
Yeah, but you, they should be able to hear you.
Yeah. For the record, my name is Harmony Baright, and I am here just as myself today. But to establish my credibility on this issue, I've been working on water planning and management for 20-plus years. Previously worked with the Water Resources Department to help stand up the place-based planning program through the pilot phase and have been working with both the state and at the community level to continue to figure out how place-based planning works in the state of Oregon. And I just want to begin by expressing gratitude for the work of Margot, Lily, and Kim on the rulemaking process. I was a member of the RAC and really appreciated all of the participants' contributions. I, my ideas changed through those conversations and I really appreciated that forum. Also appreciated how responsive the agency has been to various comments raised through the RAC. I do feel that the rules before us today are a vast improvement over what was initially brought to the RAC and just want to express gratitude for that. I'm going to focus my comments on some specifics of the rules. I'll follow up with written comments. And will likely, you know, I have larger comments about the program and putting it all in context in terms of the work of the department, but I will probably wait to provide those comments until I have the ability to speak to the provision. So in terms of specific comments, my major, I'm going to just flip through my pages here because I made some notes to myself. I felt like some of the more sticky issues that came up through the RAC that the department has really deftly handled in terms of balancing different feedback. And I appreciate some of the things that I've seen in these draft, in the latest draft of the rules in response to those comments. My biggest is, my biggest concern, and this has been a concern I've raised from the beginning, and this is an area where I haven't seen change in the rules, and so I just want to emphasize, emphasize this as a concern and also talk a little bit about why this continues to be a concern of mine. Under 690-602-0005, match requirements, it states all applicants must demonstrate their required matching contribution has been secured or is being sought at the time of application. Department funding may not be released prior to secured commitment of the other funds. Pending match funds must be secured within 18 months from the date of the place-based planning award. And I want to just highlight that this program, this funding program, is distinct from the other funding programs that do fund water projects, more specifically, that generally will benefit a specific user or a set of users, whereas place-based planning is really intended to benefit the public as a whole. And when people seek grants to undertake place-based planning, to be a convener of this process, usually it's, it's not to the benefit of any organization. They're taking on an immense burden to convene and support this process. And in my work on place-based planning with the department, what we saw happening was that the state was really providing that money that was then the magnet or the seed for additional funds to come in to support this work. This is an area of funding that traditionally has not, there has not been a lot of funding for planning. And the state, really, I see them as taking a leadership role in terms of putting this money out on the ground to then attract additional funds. And this match requirement is unnecessarily restrictive and I believe will make it more difficult for people to undertake place-based planning, make it more difficult for them to kind of begin, initiate the process and secure the necessary funding. There will be maybe too much of a focus on match. And that the timeframes just are way too restrictive for this type of program. I would recommend, it makes sense that match would be required, that we would have, you know, communities and participants in place-based planning putting forward some match with the state funds. But I would argue that this funds, these matching funds should be secured prior to the final dispersment of the department's funds rather than this kind of need to have it all upfront. I, I haven't heard articulated really the necessity of having the match secured upfront. I do believe, just in my, in being grantee and working with grantees, that this is unnecessarily restrictive, and I have very big concerns about putting it in rule. The other thing about match, and I just want to, I believe we discussed this in the RAC, but I just want to clarify and make sure that this is incorporated. Under 3E, the value of in-kind labor, counting that towards match, I want to make sure that that includes volunteer time. For place-based planning, we have thousands of volunteer hours from people who otherwise would not be compensated, you know, they're not compensated for their labor, they're not compensated for their time, but there is immense value in public time being put forward to this effort. And in, when I previously worked for the department, in-kind labor had a very specific meaning, that was contract work that was being kind of donated to the effort, and it really didn't include volunteer time, volunteer labor. And so I just want to make sure that as we're thinking about what is appropriate match for state dollars, that public time spent on this process is counted towards that match. And I would, I would actually make the case for including that specifically rather than interpreting it in in-kind labor. I appreciate the department's inclusion of the neutral facilitator as a demonstrated, you know, as a commitment to a neutral process rather than necessitating the use of a neutral facilitator. I do believe that it should be, you know, one of the things that the department is evaluating, you know, the likely success of a process, but not necessarily requiring. Let's see. Under state recognition of a plan, 690-602-0007, it states the department, in consultation with other relevant state agencies, shall identify, document, and communicate to collaborators which plan strategies are consistent with an agency's mission, authorities, and priorities, and whether and how they may be supported by those agencies as resources and capacity allows. I appreciate inclusion of this language and that kind of conversation between the state and the places is essential. One thing that's missing here is just kind of the when this will occur, if it will only occur once or if it will occur, occur on a recurring basis. I would include language that would have this occurring on a recurring basis. I don't know the appropriate time step, but I'll make the recommendation when I put forward my written comments. In terms of state recognition of plans, one of the conversations that we were having within the department and with the commission for nearly, you know, eight years now is the value of state recognition. And as a state, I feel like we keep punting on that issue. We keep not discussing that issue. And I would argue that the rules don't really go far enough to, to talk about the value of state recognition, and I would hope that the department is putting forward some more specific language, even if it's outside of the rules, about what do these plans mean and how will they be used. I continue to see very vague language, very vague commitments that make it difficult to understand the true purpose and value of pursuing place-based planning and developing a plan. So yeah, I will have more to say about that at a future date. On public notice and comment, 690-602-0009, there was quite a bit of discussion about this, and this is the one area where I don't feel like it's as clear as it should be just yet. This 45-day public comment period for both the, the award of a grant as well as state recognition, it's really not clear how those public comments will be used and how they will be used either by the agency review team or the department. I think the, I'll provide more specific written comments here, but if we're asking the public to comment, those comments should matter. We shouldn't be seeking public comment if, if that doesn't matter. And it's unclear right here in this language how the department intends to use the public comment, if they will be responded to, if they will be used to modify a recommendation, if they will be used, yeah, it's just super unclear. And I guess my concern with the language as it's currently written is that public comment won't, won't likely impact a decision, and we shouldn't ask for public comment if it doesn't have the ability to impact the decision. Also, on 1B, written notice to county and tribal governments, there should be a time specified on that if that's within the 45-day public comment period, or if it's happening within a different time step, so that should be clarified. I believe my last kind of, oh, nope. On 690-602-0010, distribution of grant funds, same concern I raised before. On 2, here it says, prior to dispersment of department funds, the grantee must provide the department satisfactory proof the required match based on the total award has been secured. Again, this is unnecessarily restrictive. It prevents the money from the state being used effectively as seed or magnet funding for other, other funds. And it just, I, I'll come up with something a little bit more eloquent in writing, but I just think this is, talk to more grantees, talk to the place-based planning grantees. This is unnecessarily restrictive and I think will actually make it more difficult for the people we want to be doing this work, to be doing this work, and to focus on the work of planning versus the work of fundraising. So I would argue that we should just add the word "final dispersment," so prior to final dispersment of department funds, match must be secured. And I also think, one of the reasons I think this is unnecessarily restrictive is because there isn't, this is a, this is a kind of language in search of a problem. This is, hasn't been a problem. All of the planning groups have secured match. I don't know why it needs to be provided on the front end. It just doesn't logically make sense to me, and again, is unnecessarily restrictive. Agreements or contracts, I appreciate inclusion of this language specifying that, you know, the department might use funding in line with their statutory authority outside of the planning grants. One of the biggest comments I have, will have to make to the commission is the importance of this program outside of just being a grant program, that there really needs to be a thoughtful programmatic approach to planning within the department, of which place-based planning is part of that approach. But it's important that the department see the ability to use this money to advance planning more generally and all of the necessary component parts to successfully produce and implement a plan. Under 1 here, the department, in consultation with other relevant state agencies, shall produce and publish a report at least every four years. I think that really should be biennial, it should be two years, looking at how much money is coming in and how much money is going out, how much money will be used for planning grants, how much money will be used for other, other things such as maybe agency capacity, developing technical analyses, outreach, convenings, things such as that. So I think four years is maybe too long for that. Appreciate the inclusion of provisional technical assistance. That goes, that helps to show that this is more than just a planning grant. And I'm hoping that, just in line with the previous section, that funding will be used towards providing technical assistance as well as providing grants. And that can take on so many different forms. Program evaluation, appreciate inclusion of this section. Really, place-based planning cannot stagnate. It will need to continually be evaluated and improved upon in order to achieve the goals of places and the state. And I would really recommend that there be very, that this section include a timeframe of potentially no less than eight years, maybe in line with the Integrated Water Resources Strategy Update, so that it's not just kind of languishing. I love the idea of evaluating, but there really need, this needs to be happening on a kind of predictable time step, otherwise I have concerns that it will not occur. And I do see it as kind of a necessary, I see it as necessary for all programs, but I also know how easy it is to, when things get busy, to forego program evaluation if it's not otherwise required. Those are the extent of my specific comments. I'll provide additional, I'll provide all of this in writing and also have additional feedback on, I guess, programmatic.
Thank you, Harmony. So it looks like I've called on all the names of everyone who's signed up online and in person. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment? Not seeing anybody's hands raised online or any comments in the chat. I'll continue to stick around until noon if anybody does want to submit a verbal comment. Otherwise, you have until January 15th at 5:00 PM to submit a written comment. And if you go to the landing page on the website, the link that I provided in the chat, that'll provide some more instructions and information on the rulemaking itself, what's been done up to this point, as well as the notice material and how to comment. I mean, one thing I haven't mentioned is that this is anticipated for adoption at the commission hearing in March.
Cool.
Yeah.
I know that like at that point, there's no, like that comment doesn't probably affect the rules, but is public comment accepted? I guess there's like general public comment that the commission needs.
Yeah, maybe you're gonna have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think general comment is always accepted at the other commission meetings. That may influence or may not influence at that point, depending on what the commission says.
Yeah, okay. So interesting that there's so few people.
I, I think it depends on the rulemaking. With both place-based planning and the best practices in community engagement, there was a lot of engagement at the outset. And I think that's probably why. But yeah, I think it's pretty standard unless it's like a really contested rulemaking or a region-specific, like localized rulemaking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So interesting.